Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September Planning Board meeting. Holly is on vacation. She will transcribe the minutes though from the recording. So if you speak, just make sure your mic is on. And when you're done, you can just turn it off. Otherwise we can hear rustling noise, et cetera. So. I guess I will follow the rule. I'm here, Mr. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Nestro.
Here.
Mr. Winterman.
Here.
Ms. McDonald.
Here.
Ms. Youthy.
Here.
Vice Chair McCumsky.
Here.
And Ms. Hopkins.
Yeah.
All right, welcome. So everyone knows you were. Appointed. The Town Board meeting, so. Well, we didn't get your name tag yet. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in indivisal liberty and justice. Thank you. Hopefully, everyone got their packet, the agenda in minutes, et cetera. So Privilege of the Floor, is there anything that anyone would like to bring up? This time that's not on the agenda? Okay, it's gonna be a short meeting, I believe. Approval of Minutes, August 28th meeting. So I was not here, so Caitlin ran the meeting. Record time, I think. Again, no agenda items. A couple of reports. Any corrections to the minutes?
I have, I have one correction.
Yes.
Um. Under the Comprehensive Plan, under the Town Reports, it's listed at the Richard Town Hall, but it should say Richmond. And then I have a question.
Oh, Rich, okay, yes.
Under Privilege of the Floor, in bold, there, in parentheses, the number's twenty-five or two oh twenty-five dash sixty-one. And then below again. When. We approve the minutes, there's another notation with new, with numbers with a sixty-two. Do you know what those mean?
That's the number of motions that have been voted out.
Okay.
Runs. Commuted ways throughout the year. So we had sixty-two motions. Unless, unless there's a discrepancy here. I don't actually, you know, sixty-one is the first one. Sixty-two is the last one. That's what that is.
The, the adjournment should be sixty-three. There's sixty-one. Sixty-one is.
Oh, yeah. Go to the floor.
And sixty-two is.
So that should be sixty-three.
For H adjournment, that should be sixty-three.
Twenty twenty-five dash sixty-three. No, any other corrections?
I make a motion, we approve.
Go ahead, Rich. Prove with the corrections.
With the corrections.
Okay, I need like Birch seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, thanks. So tonight's items, first one are general reports, Town Board meeting. I attended the September third. They held it early this month for some reason. It was.
Labor Day.
No, that was another reason. Labor Day was the first, so that was not their normal meeting. Their normal meeting would have been the second. Second Monday. So for some reason they moved it up.
Maybe because of the budget.
Uh. Possibly. They have the budget workshop tonight. Uh, pretty routine reports. Highway is really the only one that reported things and they reported their actions. Doing some first surface repairs on Canadice Hill Road. And they repaid portion of Johnson Hill. I believe both of those are gonna get the oil and stones before the cold weather. Completed the road striping on the roads that are ready. They had done some shoulder maintenance on Canadice Lake Road. Third round of roadside mowing started that week. Highway Department assisted Bristol and South Bristol with their chip sealing. They hauled stone for them. They do that. The towns share that responsibility and that workload. And he had to do some work on one of the major culverts on Canadice Lake Road. Tree had gotten jammed in there and broke the actual header, so they had to replace that. Doing some equipment maintenance. They're very unhappy with the new roadside mower they bought. It's only a couple of months old and had this pair of people there three or four times. And as of that day, it still wasn't working. Correct. It's all warranty, but machine's out of order, so. They were not very happy about that. So that was his report. Honeyeye Lake Watershed Task Force, widespread blue green algae was in the lake at that time. And they have an explanation for that. The lake turned over, you know, the cold air, cold water from the bottom. Comes up, mixes things up. Just a little phosphorus into the water. And the algae blooms, typical for this time of the year. Uh, water operations, everything was okay. That, that water system. Is working very well. They don't have any issues. They haven't had any reported issues. They did have a leak in one of the places and they had a little higher water usage one time, but. It's running very smoothly, very smoothly from the operations standpoint. All business, they finally decided on a propane contract. They decided to go with Superior Plus. Which is what they've had, except this building, of course, uses geothermal and stuff. But town barns and the water tank down on Thirty-Sixth. Or House and the courthouse, you know, they, so they decided on Superior. They went back and forth on this. They, and the. Price that was quoted was two nineteen-nine per gallon. They did have a lower bid from Noco, but Noco wanted the town to buy the tanks and. Plus and minuses to that. I guess the town owns one of them. One at the town barn, the others belongs to the vendor. So they, back and forth, back and forth. They finally decided they needed to make the decision, so they decided on Superior. So with that, if any of you are customers of Superior, you can call them and you're, you're eligible to get that rate. Two nineteen-nine. You just have to tell them you're. Member of the Town of Canadice group for pricing. And they waive any program fees that you might have. I use that. It's a fixed price plan and there's a program fee of forty-nine dollars, but they waive that and give us the, so anyone is eligible. If you're interested, you should give them a call.
Noco will also usually honor that price, but you really kind of got a strong arm into it.
Yeah.
You have to insist that you're going to switch vendors.
Threaten to move away.
Uh, and then they'll usually honor it.
So every year it's the same, back and forth, who's giving the best, what are the requirements? So anyway, they finally decided on that, so. They would give me, they gave me the price personally too. Other new business, they did approve, appointed Gwen as the alternate planning board member. Just for your information, her term runs for five years. We've never, to my knowledge, we've never had an alternate that went more than five years. Because normally someone, there's a turnover on the board, the alternate often wants to be a regular member, so, but it is a five-year term. They also reappointed Canada's Board of Assessment Review, Karen Schley. They did set a public hearing for code book updates on, to include the code book update on Chapter one twenty-sixty-six. Which has to do with recreation vehicles. Uh, while we, while we were on that, someone asked about, what about the update? To Chapter ninety-two, eighty-two. Eighty-two, ninety-two on sewers. Um, turns out, who was on the board at the time, but in July. Of twenty twenty-four, we, Planning Board, based on. Birch Craig, and I think someone helped him out, researched the town code and suggested revisions to it. Primary pro, issue there was that New York State code. In terms of set property setback is fifty feet. What is it?
I thought it was ten.
Uh, no, it's ten. Let me see. What sort of the changes? Yes, ten feet. Right? And. Our local code had. Eighty. And because of that, um. Most of the septic. Installations and upgrades had to come up before the Board of Health and ask for a variance because many of them don't have that much setback. And so there were discussions and, and most of the other towns comply with the New York State requirement. Turns out the history was, when the code was enacted, most of the septic systems were not an engineered system. People could do pretty much what they wanted to. And because of soil, soil content and steep slopes. Not much attention was paid to it. But now, uh, now the septic systems have to be designed and stamped by a licensed engineer. And so gi- given that, the thought was, it's the engineer's responsibility to make sure that it's safe and going to function properly. And we were one of the last, maybe the last town that still had that large setback. So anyway, we reviewed it. Birch and came up with a recommendation. And in July of twenty twenty-four, we, Planning Board. Uh, voted to adopt the New York State regulation and we recommended to the Town Board that they do that. We submitted the verbiage on it. Verbiage of what the code should look like. And in the September meeting of the Town Board. They accepted our recommendation. They unanimously approved, carried to accept the changes and they will be added to the other code changes that must be passed as local laws. Turns out, never got passed. Okay, so. Town Board did not, has not yet followed through on that. Um, we're gonna prompt them on that, but in the meantime, Caitlin mentioned that, or Birch, or both, mentioned that any code book up, like, updates. Are required to be approved by County Planning Board. And we've not done that. I don't think we've done that with any of our local law, any of our zoning updates. Since I've been around here. Um, but it is a requirement and so Caitlin pointed out that the issue is if they're not approved by the County Planning Board. Then that portion of the zoning code could be challenged by a resident or a user. And possibly. Not required to conform to that. So I don't know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna write a letter to the Town Supervisor. Since we, as Planning Board, had recommended to the town, the town minutes said they were going to do it, I'm gonna write a letter of reminding them of that. Uh, and also the fact that they are required to go through County Planning. So it'd be a responsibility of either the supervisor or his clerk or something to get that done. Yes, Starless.
Now, you said that.
Yep.
You said that, um, we haven't submitted these things to the County Planning Board in the past. Is it time that we just take them as a group and say? We're sorry.
You're gonna leave it up to the supervisor.
Okay, okay. So it would be application from the, the Town Board rather than the Planning Board?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause they're the, we are the recommending, but they're the legislative branch.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Caroline.
And would that be Birch's role to present that at the county? Or, cause you go to those meetings or who, who does that?
No, it's, it's. The, either the clerk or the supervisor needs to submit the applicant or submit it to the County Planning Board. And then the staff would review it. And then present it. To the Planning Board. So, no, it's not my responsibility.
That's in the case of a, a code update. If there are, there are other actions that we have to apply for County Planning Board approval, certain site plans, certain subdivisions with the fit, certain.
And the same with.
And in that case, in the CBA also, and in that case, it would be. I would fill out. A request to the County Planning Board. And they would then schedule it. I don't know if it's still the case, but in the past. If the town who submitted it, the, the county rep was not allowed to participate in any of the discussion or the vote on that. Um, I don't know if they've changed that or not.
Well, so if something came from the planning, I'd have to refuse myself. Because I sit on the planning board, but if it came from CBA, I don't.
Right, right.
So, yeah, it's the standard.
So, and we don't have many of them. Actually, they've relaxed. I have a list of things that they require. They used to require anything that was on a county road, subdivision of site plan. No longer have to do that. There are very few instances that we, as a planning board, require County Planning Board approval. So, so it stirred up a lot of activity here.
I think maybe it would be helpful to get some clarification, exactly which actions and what circumstances. Whether it's from us or the CBA or the Town Board, just so that we can. Um, kind of all double check each other so that these things don't end up falling.
I mean, if you want, I can let email.
Yeah, Linda Phillips.
Kyle, well, Kyle, he's kind of taken over, but he or Linda to find out exactly what needs to be submitted.
Yeah.
Like, and that way we'll have a list that everyone can go off of.
Right. I got this, this list. See, there's no data on that. Items that were eliminated from County Planning Board review. Area varian, variances, local permit that have no renewals from previous. So there is a list of things that we are required to. So if we could, if you could get that from Kyle. And then just distribute it to everybody, so. It's all on us.
I think they're exper, I think some places are doing electronically now.
It's the submission?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the last one we did, I did it electronically.
Yeah, there's an email address you can send submissions to. The deadline is the last Friday of the month, or the fourth Friday of the month, I forget which.
Yeah.
Um, but they send out a calendar with the, that the deadlines are right on there. Um, but I definitely think that this should be a priority because, like our short-term rentals, that local law never went through. That's, that's a pretty important one.
I'm not sure about the RV code, if that went through or not.
Uh.
Oh.
It's another situation.
We could probably ask the County Planning Board to take a look and see what has been submitted, but. I, I agree with Caitlin. I mean, the town's just leaving itself wide open.
Yep. Um. What was the, um. Update to the recreational vehicle that was discussed at the Town Board meeting?
Uh, it was, and actually it came up at the County Planning Meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Information meeting, someone asked why it was such a restrictive number of days.
But we're not changing, right, or?
I'm not sure it ever got incorporated.
In.
In the code book. I don't know. I didn't, I did not.
The previous one, didn't Steve Engard do it? Like a few years ago? We clarified it.
It was updated at that time, but if the local law was never sent to County Planning, even if it is in our code book, someone can challenge it. Uh, and it was brought up during the public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan update. Um, and the resident was directed to, um. Either come to a planning board meeting or discuss in more detail with you and then as a planning board. Uh, we could take another look if it seemed, uh, like an update was necessary.
Yeah.
Um, but she did not come to the last, um.
That was Jacqueline, right?
I'm not sure what her name.
She lives on County Road Thirty-Six.
Uh, but she didn't come to the planning board meeting when you were absent.
Right.
So I don't think we've had any follow-up from that resident.
Okay, so we need some clarification. Yeah, what should we, should we do anything retroactively? Um, what's our path forward? And. Make sure that everything that we, as a planning board, have recommended to the Town Board for code updates.
I'll put that in my email, ask them. For their clarification, do we need to go back?
Okay. Thank you. It seemed like a little thing, but it kind of expands. Some of these are thoughts. Good points, everyone. Thank you. Okay, so here it is, the RV, they're setting a public hearing for code book update. Chapter one twenty-sixty-six RVs or the October meeting. So apparently they've not done it.
Wait a minute, it's just.
Are they active?
The RV.
Is that the old one that you pulled for reference?
Oh.
That's the next.
September third, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, what are they updating in the RV?
Well, it may be a case where it never got updated. I don't know.
Cause that was.
And that was.
A few years ago.
Quite a while ago.
Yeah, I mean, I know Steve Engard worked on the wording of it.
I would say that was like twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
It was well before we did sewers.
It's, yeah. RV tool.
I think it was in between short-term rental and sewers.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So they're gonna have a public hearing. Get on it before their October meeting. Make sure it really.
I mean, they don't say what.
No, just they're setting a public hearing for it and I don't remember the discussion about it, so. All right, and they had a draft town budget, um, that they distributed. They were having a budget workshop. I just had it this evening before our meeting, uh, so they're finalizing what the budget proposal will be. I would imagine it'll be on our October agenda. They have to give it down. By November, maybe October, pretty soon.
I think they adopt the budget in, uh, November.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if Supervisor Vestal had a chance to tell you, but there is a proposed raise for planning board members to fifty dollars per month.
I heard that. I didn't know whether that survived the. Budget meeting. Did it?
It's, the budget hasn't been adopted yet, but it's.
Money.
Two dollar increase, right? Four percent. Which, uh. At our next meeting, we'll be filling out vouchers or pay for any meeting or training expenses that we've had through this year, up through October. Okay, I'll put together a, I've got a spreadsheet with attendance, I'll tell you about just, unless you know your, you know. Which one you've attended or not. You're not required to take the payment, to take less, can't take norm, but you can take less as well, so.
And I'll put together attendance for the Comprehensive Planning Committee.
Yep.
Um, and then for anybody who attended in-person training, don't forget your mileage, it's also eligible.
Yep.
And I think you ended up paying out of pocket for one of your trainings.
They already reimbursed.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure you had that reimbursed.
So we'll take care of that at our October meeting, is filling out the vouchers. And so that, then at their November meeting, they will approve those and we'll get a check right after November meeting. And then at our December meeting, we'll fill out the voucher for the remaining November, December meetings. That's, that, that's easier from a budget standpoint for them to do. We'll, we'll be doing that at this meeting. And that was all, the Town Board. County Planning Board, anything, Birch?
Yeah, I attended the CRC meeting on Tuesday, the ninth, and the Planning Board meeting on the tenth. And nothing to do for our area or really of any interest.
Okay. Questions for Birch? Thank you. Zoning Board. Um, I didn't get any paperwork, so I don't know if they met or not. Code Enforcement, you have the, uh, report from Joe Miller. Monthly report is in the packet. Um, I did, we did ask him for a list of violations and.
I also, um. Yes, seventeen dwelling permits issued, but I only count fifteen.
They include renewals?
Now renewals is separate.
Separate?
One renewal.
Okay. Would you like to call Joe and ask him or you'll need to contact?
I can call him and ask him.
Okay.
If he'll answer the phone.
Leave a message for him. Any questions you have about this, you can call Joe Miller, our CEO, directly and. He'll get back to you if he's not there. Or, um, Rich, Rich, joking as a deputy. Comprehensive Plan, anything new for us?
Uh, so we had the public hearing. I think we discussed that at our last Planning Board meeting. Uh, our committee met, uh, this month. We, um, went over any outstanding comments received during the public hearing or. Comments received in writing after that. Uh, we got those comments updated in the draft plan. Uh, so the draft plan is in, uh, final format. It will go to County Planning Board for their October meeting. Um, the Comprehensive Plan Committee will not meet in October. The meeting is the day after County Planning Board. So we won't have received our comments in time. Uh, we will meet one final time in November to. Review and incorporate, uh, the comments received from County Planning and then. After our November meeting, we will submit it to the Town Board for final review. And then at the December Town Board meeting, we will do Seeker, the second public hearing, and then, uh, hopefully adoption of the plan at the December meeting.
Where's the attorney come in?
I don't think it gets reviewed by attorney.
Okay. And you're taking care of the County Planning Board application for. Thank you, good.
And Seeker, you're doing, the county is doing this, you're gonna.
They filled out the seeker form, so Thomas Lyon, that's part of the contract we have with the county. Um, so he's doing that form and then.
The board approves the seek.
Correct. And that'll all happen at that December meeting.
In theory. Good. All right.
So we're in the home stretch.
Yeah, that's great news. Any questions for Caitlin or anyone on the team? Okay, we don't have any old business or new business. Um, all of the. Site plans and subdivision maps have been submitted and approved, passed on. Um. So last privilege of the floor, anything that anyone wants to bring up?
I just have one thing. Um, the next, uh, County Special Collection Event is for electronic waste recycling. And that is going to be at the Town of Bristol on October eleventh and registration did open for that today. Um, so if anybody's interested, all the details are at OntarioCountyRecycle.org.
Do you have any some? Okay, thank you.
Uh, tanks that are pressurized, the only place that takes those is Elko and Macedon.
Okay, anything else? Yes, Starless.
I went to the Genesee River Watershed Implementation Plan meeting, um, down at the Town of Richmond and, um. I, I don't really have too much to report on that. There, the two local concerns that they're looking at in particular are phosphorus, which was mentioned with the algae and sedimentation. And the, um, fellow from DEC, um, Ryan Elliott, said that, uh, the Ontario County meeting was the best attended. Of the whole series of meetings with the exception, of course, of Monroe County, which has a lot more population. And he will be getting all of the comments together and making a report, so. We'll see what, what comes of that.
Anything? Particularly that affects our tone?
No, but there were four. Let's see, there were four subwatersheds and Canadice is listed for two of them. Um. Because the ponded waters, we have three, Hemlock, Canadice and Honeyeye Lake, so. We'll see, um, we'll see what their recommendations are. And, um. Being part of this, this, uh, whip, the, um, watershed implementation plan, um, you know, getting. Working with them, if there's grants that we would go after, we might get, you know, a few extra stars on our grant application for working with them, but. They don't give out money.
Terry Gronwell, who is a council member, is a representative of the twenty-eight Lake Watershed Task Force. And they're the ones that initiate WQIP requests, et cetera. And he reports once we have the town board meeting, that's. Where I got the algae information this month, okay, thanks, yeah.
Thanks for attending that information.
Sure, and um, so that reminds me, end of the year is coming up, everyone. Not you, Gwen, is required to have four hours of training. Multiple ways of getting that training, a lot of online training available at no cost, uh. New York Planning Federation, NYPDF, there's all kinds of asked sessions that you can request a week to. Get credit for them, so you're gonna re- you're gonna need four hours per year, you'll be exempt, but you're welcome to take any. That you want.
They do have some nice uh, like intro to planning board writings that are saved on there that might be of interest.
Yeah.
Now, if she does any this year, is she able to roll that into next year or no?
Yes. Anything you do this year, you can carry over.
You can roll it over, yeah.
Yeah, and there is a Genesee Finger Lakes Regional Planning Council. Workshop, I didn't bring the information on that, did I send it out?
I don't think you did, I get their emails separately. Oh, maybe I just.
That's a six-hour training, it's being held in Newark this year, I'll send out the information.
The topics looked interesting.
Anyone wants.
The spring one, and it was, the topics were good, the presenters were very interesting.
It's an all-day session, they provide a lunch, and it's either six or seven training hours usually. So you can use four hours for one year and carry the three.
And on the county planning board, I have to do eight hours.
You do? Wow.
Do you know the date for that?
I don't, uh, it's October, I'll send it out, uh.
You have to do eight separate, eight hours, wow, four hours.
Town of Farmington Planning Board members also have to do eight hours.
Eight hours.
For their planning board, and they meet twice a month. Oh. I'm not playing. Seems very.
You see, we see a lot of stuff, you know, we do Farmington, Canadegra.
Victor.
Yeah, Geneva.
Yeah. Okay, um, anything else on privilege of the floor? Uh, I did give you a new roster, check out your personal information, make sure it's correct. And uh, we'll be putting out another one at the beginning of next year with meeting dates. Alright, nothing else, a motion?
I make a motion to you, yeah.
Alright Dwight, is there a second? Starless, thank you, all in favor?
I.
I close, thanks everyone.
Actually, in a meeting where a motion.